Okay, I'm calling this special workshop. I have lots of audience. Calling this special workshop to order.
Excellent. So, I really appreciate you guys taking time to do this. My understanding is that Councilmember Jones is on her way, but thank you to my peers for being here tonight. It's important for us to be able to do some things together. I'm going to let the city manager kick us off, but I want to make sure everyone understands from a planning and zoning standpoint that although this is your first meeting with us, it will not be our first joint workshop. And the intention is that we will be meeting with each of the other boards. And it's a way of making sure that we're all on the same page and all singing from the same sheet of music, as my grandma used to refer to it. And the other thing is that this is not a one meeting and done. This will be a regular meeting. And it will become a part of the calendar for council to meet on a regular basis with each of the boards just as an open and transparent, all on the same page, and as an effort to move the city forward. Ms. Patterson, is there anything you'd like to say to your commission?
No, just that I'm glad to see the folks here and I'm glad to open up lines of communication between the two bodies. I think that's been a challenge for us in the past and I'm hoping to see a lot of improvement moving forward.
Excellent. With that, I will turn it over to our city manager.
Well, thank y'all very much. Just to put into context, this evening, the first part is going to be some training on planning and zoning fundamentals. And even if you've been involved in planning and zoning for a long time, sometimes we forget the why. Why do we do things the way we do them? And it's nice to be reminded of that. We have some new Planning and Zoning Commission members that need to learn it correctly. We have some new council members that have not been involved in planning and zoning that need to be, to learn it correctly. And the reason why that is so important is going to be covered in item 2B. City Council has participated in a retreat this summer and has a vision statement and a mission statement. They've identified nine focus areas and a list of priorities. And some of the more significant priorities of work fall under the policy recommendations of planning and zoning. So I think when you see the program of work that we will anticipate this next year, you'll understand why we started at the beginning of the conversation. Because we're going to be amending a number of our processes over the next year. We're going to be doing some pretty significant code revisions in the next several years to now get our codes in line with our comprehensive plan. So, we'll talk about that in 2B. And then 2C is exactly following up on what the mayor talked about. And that is, I'd like for us to leave with the next meeting scheduled so everybody can put it on their calendar anticipating when we'll be coming back. And then if there's some agenda items that after we have this conversation tonight, y'all want to put on the agenda for future conversations, we'll do that. So without any further ado, I want to introduce to y'all this evening Joe Gorfita. He is a partner with the law firm of Nichols, Jackson, Billard, Hager and Smith. They are located in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. I have worked with Mr. Gorfita for probably 25-plus years. I consider Joe to be a true expert and an extremely well-respected municipal attorney in the Dallas area. Joe's areas of expertise are land use, economic development, annexation. A number of the cities that he is city attorney for are Hutchins, Lucas, Lothian and Saxon. And they very much resemble a Bastrop profile. They are all in the stages of growing, dealing with all of the challenges that we're dealing with. So, one of the things that I have asked him to do tonight is to share real-world experiences of the things to do right and well and the things not to do. So perhaps we can learn from others' opportunities. So, without any further ado, I want to turn it over to Joe.
I'm going to rudely interrupt. Councilmember Ennis pointed out that not all of the council knows everyone on planning and zoning. And it might be beneficial for you, Mr. Gorfita, if we go around the room. I'd like you to say your name, whether you're on council or planning and zoning, and how long you've been there. I think that might be helpful to everyone. And let's start with Richard.
And let me say this for benefit of our camera person. You need to get up in the mic. So, it's not going to bite you, but you need to get up in it for good sound.
Richard Gartman, I'm on Planning and Zoning. And this is only my second meeting of Planning and Zoning. So I'm bringing.
Matthew Laston, I'm also on Planning and Zoning. This is my first meeting, but I spent the four years previous with Board of Adjustments. And maybe that qualifies me, I guess.
Sue Anne Frugé, Planning and Zoning. And this is my second, third week. But I was on Planning and Zoning in Westlake.
Debbie Moore, Planning and Zoning. I've been on the board since 2015.
I'm Lisa Patterson. I've been on P&amp;D for 11 years now. Long enough. Chief John Chee. And I'm the chair.
I'm Connie Schrader. I've been mayor for three months, but previous to that, I had been on Planning and Zoning for six years.
Bill Ennis, I'm a newbie on the council, just elected in May. And I'm also a former member of Planning and Zoning.
Lyle Nelson, I've been on council for 41 days. But I'm not counting.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bill Peterson. And I've been on the council. This is my second term on the council. And I'm really enjoying the people I'm working with.
Gary Schiff, Mayor of Pro Tem. Been on the council for two years. And I was on the EDC board for almost 18 years.
I'm Alyssa Halli-Schram. I started with Planning Commission back in February and served briefly on Board of Adjustments before that. I filled a vacancy and then was reappointed in June.
Councilmember Jones, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Deborah Jones. And I've been on the council for a little over a year now. Just honored to serve. And I'm, I guess officially, I don't want to use the wrong word, the liaison to Planning and Zoning.
That's exactly what you are.
And so, I'll be attending all your meetings and telling y'all what to do. I'm kidding. I am so kidding, okay? No, so anyway, I'll be, you know, the contact for you guys. And I'm really excited to be able to provide that representation for the council. Thank you very much.
Okay, I won't interrupt you anymore. I'm sorry about that.
Is the mic okay? I'm not sure if it's going to interfere with the microphone if I get too close to the folks on the end. So I'll stay, keep a distance from them. I appreciate the opportunity to come here this evening and speak with council mayor and the commissioners. And as you made the comment, or 45 days? Is it? Nelson, Nelson, there we go. Forty-five days on council?
Don't get me too much credit, 41 days.
Forty-one days. The presentation that you're going to see is a similar presentation that I do to the cities that I represent. And we try to do it at least once every two years. And several weeks ago after the elections, actually several months ago after the elections, we had a new council. And the council member didn't have any experience on P&amp;D. And the city manager said, "We'll just wait a little while before we do, you know, the orientation." We try to give even the council members the orientation as it relates to land use. So we had a preliminary plat. Those of you familiar with preliminary plat, really real simple approval. Meet all the requirements, does it meet all the requirements? City manager, yes it does. All right, approved. Move for approval. And the new council member goes, "What kind of houses are going in there?" And I said, "Excuse me, what kind of houses? How much?" "We don't want those kind of in our city." So, the city manager, I said, "I think..." So, if anything, when we do this training, for those of us that have been on the P&amp;D City Council, P&amp;D, a lot of this is just, it's going to be repetitive. But I think it's good to sort of remember some of the fundamentals, the basics. And the way that I've done the presentation is we're going to start off and talk about just some of the basics. You know, what are the tools when we make decisions? What do we have available to us? Codes, to the local government code, to the state laws. And then some of the challenges, especially some of the experiences that I've had, some of the challenges that we are now seeing with, as I call them, "not in my backyard", the different types of uses that are coming into play. And then finally, we'll talk about some of the other tools. I'm not going to jump in or dive into your downtown overlay district because we'd be here way, way deep into the night and you would be asleep. And I would be talking to myself. So we're going to try to stay away from getting in depth on the overlay district. Talk about some other zoning tools that we have and that we may frequently use or not so frequently use. And then kind of wind it to the end about the wonderful open meetings. And there have been a lot of new mechanisms that we've been using today. You know, not so much emails as much as cell phones. Talk about some of the things to kind of keep in mind as public officials and how we communicate. You know, and I'm not your city attorney, so you can say mean things to me. I'm the attorney. That's why we're here. Let's keep the, I'm willing to keep the format somewhat informal. So as we're going through this, I can kind of stop and pause and see if we have questions before I move on to another subject area. Or if you have questions and you want to stop and interrupt me, I have no problem with that. Well, I'm here for as long as you want to be here. More than, more than, I know, I got, that gets everyone all the time. You always flip, "How many slides are there? That's a minute a slide. Oh no, that's 51, that's 51 minutes." So, also, you want...
I was going to tell you that Joe has published a paper that's about a 50-page summary that covers a lot of things from Robert's Rules of Order to all of the tools that you need to do planning and zoning. We have laminated it so that it becomes a resource for you, a tool in the future. And then you also have a copy of his presentation, so if you'd like to make notes, you can certainly do that as well.
And the paper that you have in front of you is the paper that I've used before in the past when I've done presentations. Most recently, at the University of Tech for the Land Use Planning Conference, the Mentals for Planning and Zoning and Board of Adjustments. And so this was a paper that we used. And it just has the basics for planning and zoning. So it's a good, you need assistance falling asleep at night. But it does have a lot of the basics. So it's sort of a go-to. And it doesn't get too in-depth into the law. So, and we'll see if this works. And maybe not. Leave it to Linda to show me how to work the remote. Watch, within about 30 minutes, I'll lose the remote. So keep an eye on it and where the remote ends up. So, so let's first start about talking, what is the source of authority for the Planning and Zoning Commission in the city council? Usually, the city council would like to tell the P&amp;D, "Hey, the source of authority is us, the city council, right? Do as we say and do as we want." But we know that's not necessarily always the case. So, our first place that we always look at is the Local Government Code, Chapter 211. And what is interesting, and I just put this in there, this is sort of one of those neat facts to know, is if you're a home rule city, as Bastrop is a home rule city, if you have a planning, if you're going to implement the Local Government Code, Chapter 211, you are required to have a zoning commission. You must have a zoning commission. Which is different from general law cities because general law cities aren't required to have a planning and zoning. Your city council can act as the planning and zoning, but not with home rule cities. So just kind of a little fun fact to know. We know that we look for our sources. What is it? It's the Bastrop Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. And then we also have Chapter 211 of the Local Government Code. So those are our two sources that we usually look at. How many of us read the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance recently?
This year.
Yeah, this year. What are our duties from the planning and zoning aspect? And a little bit different than, I think someone over here said they were on the Board of Adjustments. Planning and zoning is a what? It's advisory. It's an advisory board. And why is that important? It's important to know that you're an advisory board, but still as an advisory board, advisory to the city council, all your rules as far as open meetings still apply. Sometimes I hear someone say, "Well, wait a minute. We're just advisors. We don't have to adhere to all the open meeting rules." And I've gotten that question many a times. But as an advisory board, you still have to meet the requirements. And even your local codes, your ethic codes and so forth, require that all your boards and commissions, even those advisory boards and commissions, meet all the requirements for the open meetings. The posts and so forth, postings on the internet. And so it's something good to keep in mind. So if you're out there as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner and you get online to check the agenda and you realize, as I did on Tuesday when I was checking the agenda of one of my clients, I realized, "Uh-oh, the agenda's not posted online." You know, as an attorney, I have one of those moments. Do I just not say anything? Or do I call my client and say, "You can't have your meeting because the agenda's not posted online." Of course, as attorney, I have an obligation to tell them, "Hey, your meeting is not posted online." As a council member or as a planning and zoning member, you too, if you get online to look and you know you're, after the 72 hours, you do have an obligation to say, "Hey, it's not, it didn't make it online." So you can't just idly sit by.
I have a question. Does it have to be online or can it simply be posted outside the council? It has to be both?
You've got two places. Because your city maintains a website, you're now required to post it online. And you've still got to put it out in front of them in the little box that usually, by the time the meeting comes, it drops, it falls down and it gets faded. And there have been a lot of emphasis and push by the legislature to try to get that changed so that if you're posting it online, you don't have to post it out in the box in the front. But yet, we haven't been successful or the legislature has not changed that for us yet. So as far as, this is right out of your code. It is advisory nature as far as the planning and zoning. You make, they make, recommend it, they recommend amendments to the zoning code ordinances and to approve or disapprove plats to conduct an annual review of city comprehensive plan, make recommendations to the city councils deemed necessary and to serve in advisory capacity on any city-related planning item. And I emphasize, city-related planning item. Because we don't give to the planning and zoning those things that are not planning-related. We go back up a little bit, and I don't want to get too deep into that. But it's also important, especially if you ever look at annexation where you're going to be annexing, if the legislature allows you to continue annexing after this legislative session, it is important, a important aspect to look at, annexing territories as they come in and designating the appropriate zoning category for them. And that's something that the P&amp;D would look at and would do in conjunction with the annexation process. But I really won't lull you to sleep with the annexation process. This was a fun fact that I thought deserved a slide because it's the first time that I've actually had done a presentation where the P&amp;D outnumbers the city council, which I thought was interesting. So we have, in your code, you have nine members of the P&amp;D. Of course, must live in the city in Bastrop. And that's important to remember too because when you have a P&amp;D commissioner who decides to move to Austin, right, to the city of Austin, they're just tired, they want to go back to the big city living. And they move to the city of Austin. They said, "Yeah, you know what? I'll continue to serve until you find somebody." We know that individual no longer qualifies because of your ordinances to sit in the capacity on the P&amp;D, not remain in that seat. It's a little bit different in the city council where you have holdovers. And if P&amp;D commissioner, if the P&amp;D commissioner says, "You know what? I just can't do this anymore. I've got too much going on in my career." That, they, as long as they're not moving outside of the city, they'll meet the qualification. They can sit and hold over until you fill that replacement. So a little bit of a distinction to keep in mind. If they move out of the city, they no longer have the ability to serve or hold over until you fill that position. And that's a question that I've had multiple times. Sometimes it takes the council a little bit longer to fill those positions. And I can think with nine, it probably does take you some time to keep all those... Again, it's a three-year term. And as far as the P&amp;D goes, five is a quorum. Do you have any problems meeting your quorums? Historically?
From time to time. But I would say, it's probably been a while. Probably, well, probably several years ago now. About a year ago.
You have all nine members, are all nine members filled at this time? You have all nine members or all seats filled at this time?
Yes, sir.
That's great, that's good. But I saw that, I was wondering if there was a problem getting five. I usually have a problem getting four for a quorum for my council members that are of seven. So...
So on that, why did you say that you said the city council has to be five, three, and you have a quorum?
A quorum, a quorum is five. That constitutes a quorum. So out of that, so yeah, so then you go to the affirmative vote. You also have to have five. So any zoning recommended, recommended zoning changes, you've got to have five. So you've got five there, you've got to have five votes. So it's not just three of the five. It's five total. So, again, kind of little different rules to keep in mind, different than the rules out of the city council votes. Technically, it takes less votes by the city council to get something approved than it does to get something approved or approval by the planning and zoning. Well, it depends, and that's a good question. It depends on what your charter would allow. And you actually have the freedom in your city charter, which you'd have to take to an election by the voters. But you guys have chosen nine, five being the quorum, five affirmative votes. You'd have to actually change that to lessen the number of members down to five. And then you could change the number that would require, would require for a majority. And then the supermajority of five would be four.
I think Councilmember Jones was asking a different question. If they're, if they only had a quorum of five and they did not get five affirmative votes, then it would fail and it wouldn't pass. And it would still come to council. It would come to council as having not passed.
Oh, that would be a third question. What's the issue with that? That is, if you're going to decide to ask that question, if I get to see if it's reasonable to have it, it still comes to council as not having the authority?
Yeah, I believe you have, you have a rule that if you got five, if you got five members, let's say, or even less than five members, but you don't get the five votes, let's just say you get four votes. So, the zoning case is denied, okay? Or a recommendation of denial. It still goes, it would still go to the city council unless that applicant withdrew it and decided, "I no longer want to go to city, to go to city council."
But if they got a five, do you think that's a case?
Yeah, they're an advisory board. So, it always comes to council.
So, the easiest way to remember it is, the planning and zoning, voting is a recommendation. All they do, all you do is make a recommendation to the city council for approval and/or recommend denial. So everything that they do is not final, no final decision-making. It all goes to the city council. And then once it goes to the city council with a recommendation of approval and/or denial, then the city council would vote on it. They don't have to uphold the recommendation for approval or could overturn a denial by the planning and zoning.
So, just so action, not action by the voter? Do you get all five votes, five, five years?
Yeah, let's say, so if you have five members that are there, right? And you go for a vote, and let's say, three vote for it, right? Two vote against it, all right? That right there, it fails because they did not get, they did not get the required votes. So it did not pass. So it would not go forward with a recommendation for approval.
It operates differently than the charter language does for council. So in the case of the fact that there's nine members, the quorum is five. And it has to take the affirmative as the vote of the majority, which is five. So if it does, if there are only five present and five don't vote, it comes with a recommendation for denial.
And a lot of times it's...
Okay. But we can help that by your understanding. But I definitely think we still go to council. If you feel you don't comply with...
Because it's just advisory. It's just, it's just...
Okay. Here's, here is the, here's the missing piece. All of the boards and commissions that are appointed by the mayor that you affirm are nothing more than an advisory recommendation because the citizens elected you as a council member to make the final vote. So, any action they take is nothing more than a recommendation. It doesn't stop there. It just pauses and gets some kind of affirmation, either an affirmation to approve or some kind of denial. And then it continues on its journey. That's exactly right. That's right.
The only way it doesn't go to council is if the applicant says, "Time out, I don't want it to go. I no longer, I withdraw, I withdraw." But they're good questions because that comes up all the time when, you know, when you don't have, when you have only five of the members there and you only get three votes out of five. So, just real quickly on some of the basics, members of the P&amp;D can be removed at any time by the city council. There's no requirement that there be a public hearing for removal of members of the P&amp;D. Also, they can adopt their own rules and procedures, which there are some codified in the zoning code. And again, they must, all meetings are in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, and which I'm sure you know plenty about, so I'm not going to get into the details of the Texas Open Meetings Act. And of course, when do you meet? Last Thursday of the month. Let's talk about the comprehensive plan. And I think it's important, when we talk comprehensive plan, what exactly is the comprehensive plan? And the comprehensive plan is what? Is it a guide? Is it more than a guide? Is it the law of the land? How do we treat the comp plan? The comprehensive plan is basically a guide of how, what our expectations are of how the city's going to develop. And the P&amp;D is sort of the gatekeeper of initiating the review of the comprehensive plan. You have it in your code that that review would take place every year. I don't know if it does. If it doesn't, it doesn't mean we're going to go to planning and zoning jail. But there is a requirement in there that it gets looked at once a year as far as the comp plan goes. We look at the comp plan for our long-range goals and our long-range development of the city. And it's important to remember, the comp plan doesn't define our zoning districts or doesn't define what we allow as far as uses go. It's broader. It's broader. And that's why it's important to go back and review the comp plan, especially if your city is changing. And we're finding a lot of the cities in North Dallas, we're going back now and looking at the comp plan looking at the comp plan because things have changed in the last five years or 10 years. Uh, and when you look at the comp plan and when developers look at the comp plan and they look at their zoning, there is an expectation that if I want to put something industrial in, that I can go and put that industrial use in my areas that you have designated where industrial uses are going to go. Um, it makes for, called, if we don't look at the comp, comp plan, we don't review it. And then we look at our zoning when we have a user in front of us wanting to put in that industrial use. See, I think, I think that's going to be an area later on that we want to use for general retail. We can't do that. The comp plan won't allow us to do that. And that's when we start running into the issues with developers saying, no, I'm allowed to do that by the zoning and even your comp plan supports that use being in that, in that area. And that's when we, we deal with disputes, they go back to the comp plan to look at the comp plan to basically bolster their argument about, hey, what you're allowing me to put in here, I should be allowed to put in here by right. So when you look into the local government code, the local government code gives us a little bit of, um, instructions on what the comp plan is for, what the purpose is. And it's very broad. And you'll see this when you look at your comp plan and you look at the purpose, you're going to see these words almost verbatim. And it's going to be designed or, this is the last suggestion in the streets, secure safety from fire, panic and other dangers, promote health and general welfare. We use that a lot in municipal law, right? To promote some general health and welfare. Provide adequate light and air, prevent the overcrowding of land, avoid undue concentration of population, or facilitate the adequate provisions of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks or other public requirement. That's all it tells us. That's all, that's all we have, um, from the law. So that's why it's important that we use our comp plan, we review our comp plan because that comp plan is a guide to our future development of the city. Then, once we have the comp plan in place, then we go through and we start putting in our zoning districts, right? So we look at all the different zoning districts that we have within the city and I just kind of listed them all up there, up there. And when we look at the zoning districts, that's going to give our end user, our developer, the right to develop a particular use in a zoning district. And so that's why it's important when we talk about, we talk about the term straight zoning. And someone can say, by right, I can go into commercial, heavy commercial too, I can put my cement plant by right in heavy commercial too because you allow it in heavy commercial too. I have a right to do that. You can't just say, oh, you know, we have too many cement plants. That's when we talk about allowed by right. Um, when we also look at the basic zoning districts, there's other terms that we kind of keep in mind, one being, um, spot zoning. No, spot zoning is unlawful. What is spot zoning? Who here is familiar with the term spot zoning? Really not a big issue anymore. It used to be maybe 10 years ago, we don't see a whole lot of, of, of spot zoning. But what is spot zoning for those of you that are kind of new to this area? Is if you take a general commercial area and in general commercial, you're supposed to do simply put general commercial uses and someone comes in and says, I want to put that cement plant in that general commercial and it doesn't allow for it, so well, we're just going to zone this one particular area to allow for that use. Or, you know, we're going to enter a development agreement with you to allow for that use, contract zoning. That is called spot zoning and we don't do that. We don't drop a zone of a use that's incompatible with the surrounding use into a particular area. Downzoning. Great examples of downzoning, where you open yourself up to a lot of liability, is when you have a particular use such as general retail and you then downzone it to a, to a restricted use. And so someone says, I want to put in my general retail use in that zoning district and you, city council determine, well, we're going to, we're going to downzone that and that use is no longer going to be allowed. Take away that property owner's right to develop property the way that he intended it for, for it to be used. That's essentially, um, downzoning. And again, for the most part, these days, we stay clear of a lot of those, a lot of those issues when it comes to regular and straight zoning. One term, yes?
My question is...
Oh, question, second drink.
Can you talk into the mic?
If somebody goes to planning and zoning and they want to, I mean, obviously they're going there, they want you to make an exception and you're talking about spot zoning and it's incompatible, but what if the planning and zoning committee believes that it is compatible? I mean, so what makes it a spot zoning?
Okay. Excellent question. So someone goes to planning and zoning, right? And they want to put a use in. And that use, when you go to general retail, right? And the use that they want to put in, you go to general retail and you see all the uses that are allowed by right in general retail and that use isn't there. And the only way that use would be there is if we changed the zoning on that general retail to something, let's say multi, let's say multifamily, right? Multifamily. Is that compatible? Would it be downzoning a general retail? If we took that whole swath of general retail and downzoned it to multifamily just to allow that general retail to go in, that's, that would be, that would be spot zoning or for that area. But there's tools that you can use that would allow that multifamily to go into that general retail without running afoul of the term spot zoning. So there are ways around it, but, but the, the basic concept is from a zoning aspect, if you have one, like an island, for instance, that's general retail, you don't take a little circle out of the middle and downzone it to something else that's not compatible with the rest. But we're going to talk about tools, overlay districts. You've got a plan, plan developments, those are all tools, kind of in a way are spot zoning. But we'll talk, talk about those different tools. Other things, um, kind of keep in mind when we look at zoning districts, we look at churches. Um, and dealing with the communities that I deal with, we've had a, a proliferation in some of the communities of churches. Churches going into a lot of the old retail strips, uh, you know, where your grocery stores have gone out of business or your big boxes have gone out of business because they wanted to go to bigger, bigger big boxes. You have a lot of churches that want to go into the general retail. And what's sometimes a concern if a church is going to go into a general retail, big general retail spot, be the concern elected officials or, or just from the general public? Taxes, right? Taxes. Or if a church goes in, what happens to any of those other businesses around there that want to sell alcohol? If, if they receive a large amount of their tax base from the sale of alcohol and they want to keep those businesses in that area? Churches are one of those, one of those areas that we cannot single out, we cannot treat differently. We need to allow churches to go by right into, into our, into our zoning districts. Uh, Ralupa, the Religious, in Institutionalized Persons Act, uh, basically says, we can't treat churches, churches which are assembly uses different than we treat other assembly uses. Yes?
So if, if we approve zoning for a church to go into one of these other areas, say general retail, where there might be alcohol sales, that doesn't affect the alcohol sales?
No, that, that business that is currently there, uh, once a church goes in, then you have distance requirements, um, from the place, establishment, let's say a package store, a place that sells, where you, where you can buy your, buy your beer and wine and leave. There is a 300-foot distance requirement, uh, from the door to the door. So what it allows is if that establishment was already there, that establishment is grandfathered, that establishment is allowed to stay. But sometimes what happens is if that establishment leaves and it goes out of business and that business, um, maybe goes dormant for six months, depending on your ordinances. If somebody else wants to, um, then come in, um, and establish the same type of business selling beer and wine, uh, because that establishment was dark, if you will, for six months, it may be deemed abandoned, so it cannot go in and meet the requirements under the Texas Alcoholics Beverage Control that you've adopted unless the council decides, not the planning zone, but the council decides to give a type of variance from distances. Very few councils historically have given, have given variances from the distance, the distance requirements, the 300-foot distance requirements from churches and schools and public hospitals. Um, I'm seeing more and more cities that are looking at, um, giving distance requirements because the stigma with alcohol is maybe not the same for some communities as it was years ago. So they are granting variances, um, uh, depending on the type of business that it is. So, but the alcohol, Texas Alcoholics Beverage Control does allow a city to grant a variance. And it's not the type of variance that you grant to, to this person, you must grant it to everybody else. You can look at it on a case-by-case basis. And so it's a new tool that I, that I've... As far as other kind of, other issues that we have to deal with, um, we, our public schools, we know that public, um, let me go back a little bit to churches. I think it's an important thing to remember is when I talk about not, not treating churches differently than other businesses, uh, the way we've dealt with churches, um, in trying to keep, to keep them from going into some of our, some of the areas that, that have been vacated by retail, keep them as assembly uses. So if you treat them as an assembly use, so your movie theater is an assembly use, a church is an assembly use. There's a lot of other uses that are true assembly uses. That's one way that you can kind of, you can treat them, treat them all the same if you want to avoid a large assembly uses in certain areas. But again, that would have to be defined, um, under, under your code.
Now, wouldn't, wouldn't a church, wouldn't, wouldn't a church have to prove themselves to be a nonprofit to go into general retail areas?
A, a church has to be, has to, has, has to be a church. Um, as far as being a true, a true nonprofit, um, I, I can't answer if all churches are not nonprofits. I'm going to, I'm going to make the assumption that most of them are some form of nonprofit. But, you know, there, you have, you have instances where someone is holding a, you know, they're holding in their, in their, in their community, in their residential community, they're holding churches and they claim, well, I'm a church. You can't do anything about me. All these people are coming here every Saturday and Sunday, I'm taking a collection. I'm a church. I mean, what, what is it, what does that mean? Are they a true nonprofit? So it, it's challenging. It is challenging. Some of the other, when you look at some of the other zoning districts, some of the other issues, um, we've dealt with the year is we know when it comes to sexually oriented businesses. The law has said, cities, you must allow sexually oriented businesses in one of your zoning categories. You cannot zone out sexually oriented businesses. We don't see a proliferation of sexually oriented businesses today like we did back in the eighties. Uh, they're just not, they're not, they're not as, as, around as much. You've got the internet, so most people aren't going to the storefronts like they were back in, back in, back in the eighties or in the nineties. Other issues, pawn shops, you know, pawn shops. Again, kind of the other issues that we can't, uh, zone those out. And one of the big issues, continually, continually big issues, and there was actually a bill, um, I don't think it'll pass a special session, I don't think any, anything will pass this special session, um, but also dealing with community homes, group homes, sober living facilities. And how do we handle these? Most of these are coming, are appearing in our residential communities. And we know that we cannot limit these sober homes, group homes are very restricted in how we limit these in our community, particularly in our, in our residential, in our residential areas. So those are kind of some of the, the pitfalls, if you will, of you've got your use chart but you have all these other uses where the law has told us we can't treat them differently or we got, we have to allow them.
Payday loan check cashing?
Payday loan check cashing, yes, thank you. Payday loan check cashing is also another area that we know the legislature, um, I guess the last two legislative sessions, um, tried to get, uh, regulations passed to restrict those. We haven't had much luck. Many municipalities have adopted their own regulations, but payday lenders, it's simply, it's a use you just can't, you, you can't zone it out of your city. You can't regulate the location of them, um, and you, I mean, you can't put them in a place where essentially they, 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 they wouldn't be able to operate, but you can regulate their type of business, uh, through ordinances. Any other not in my backyard that you can think of? Everyone, afraid not in my backyard, and that's, that's kind of the, the coin term that we use, uh, in this, in this area. We don't, we don't, not backyard.
So you're just saying on the special use properties or not special use, but the, maybe ones that you don't want, you still have to make a spot for them. So when you say you can't zone them out, you can certainly say where you want them. Right. So that's kind of zoning them out. To me it is.
Well, what's the difference in businesses, we only allow them in C2? Then, so...
But you still can spot.
Yeah. It's just a particular...
Yeah, so once that spots, once that spot's filled up, um, you know, with, with sexually oriented businesses, or someone doesn't want to build from the ground up, they, you know, that doesn't mean you have to allow them in, in another area. So...
Or, I mean, if, if they find a great parcel in the central business district that would be perfect for whatever. Sorry. I almost heard there and I didn't. I almost went there, but I didn't. Uh, if, even if you have the perfect building for what you want to do, sorry, the only place we allow you is C2.
The, the, the thing to take away from this is the consistency with which we make decisions. So when you make a decision about a use and you put it in a category, you have to consistently apply that use throughout the, the category. You can't decide you like that payday loan shop, but you don't like that payday loan shop. No, we like all payday loan shops. Um, and Joe will talk about a, a situation where he had a grocery store where they wanted a particular grocery store, but they didn't like another grocery store. And they got into trouble because they tried to not take the one they didn't like. No, we like all grocery stores.
We go back to, uh, some of the basics kept in mind. As far as notice of the public, sometimes the public will get up and say, you know what, I didn't, I never heard about this. I live right next door, no one told me about it. So what are our requirements? We are required to notice when we do zoning adoptions, amendments and/or zoning changes, uh, required to notice the property owners, the property owners that are within 200 feet of the affected area. Within that, we always count our streets and public right of ways. That is a question many times. You do actually count the streets and right of ways in calculating your 200 feet. We mail, by first-class mail, that's the only requirement. We don't have to go out and put a placard in their yard, we don't have to send it, uh, you know, return receipt certified. First-class mail is sufficient. There's also notice in the newspaper because everybody reads the newspaper and everyone has a subscription to the local newspaper. Uh, we also put the notices online. So several different places now that the notices, that the notices are placed, but you frequently you'll have the, the public saying, I didn't know about this, um, I never got my notice, I was within the 200 feet, um, and it wasn't done, done right. And notice is, one thing we have in our favor is notice is complete once it is deposited in the mail, from the mailbox. So once it's deposited in the mail, we've satisfied our obligation. We don't have to, we don't have to, you know, make sure that it gets into that mailbox and into their hands. Once deposited, it's deemed, it's deemed to have been, uh...
Done correctly.
Any questions about the 200-feet rule? Sort of a basics. Zoning protest.
I have a, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, the other night, and P and Z had already seen this and, uh, this was past, this was past doosie, we approved a, uh, change to the, uh, at the, the colony.
Mine?
The mine. Uh, well, not the mine.
Well, if it was the development agreement, they got it to the colony, it was an amendment to the development.
Oh, was it the amendment?
They annexed some additional property.
And they sent it, uh, out to the, to the full, uh...
Subdivision.
Uh, that's just on the, that's just the, the...
Courtesy?
Uh-huh.
Courtesy, yeah. Yeah, because it's, and I don't even know if that was required to be noticed, if it was just an amendment of development agreement.
I think in that instance, because it was affecting the development agreement that impacted the development, that the right thing to do was to notify everybody that bought under the rules of that development agreement that we were amending it. So in some instances, it, as I like to say, just because you can doesn't mean you should. In some instances, you do more, just in the event that somebody had an issue, they were told.
And 200 is the minimum, 200 is the minimum under, well, there are many municipalities that go above and be, above and beyond the 200 and a, a, a larger, um, distance requirement. Zoning protests, we always love zoning protests, especially when, um, at the last minute, we're trying to calculate whether or not the 20% rules hit. So as far as the zoning protest, what does that mean? And it's not triggered at the P and Z level, it's triggered at the city council level for your zoning protest. We have written protest signed by 20% of the owners, either the area of the lot of the land covered by the proposed change or in 200 feet from the subject property. So you can have the actual, the area of the land that's covered by the proposed change. If we're going to change a particular, say the island, we're going to then notify everybody 200 feet also out from that island, right? So anyone within that 200 feet or anyone on that island who comes in and says, hey, I'm going to file a protest, we count those up, 20% or more, that's going to trigger our superma, our supermajority vote, which means you'll need how many of the, of the P and Z voting in favor of it? You'll need four P and Z members voting, uh, voting in favor for your super, for your supermajority. Did I talk to you like that right?
It doesn't...
No, it's not. You got, sorry. You got mine. So it doesn't, you're right, it doesn't trigger the, the P and Z. You, you actually, some of my cities, it trick, we have it at the P and Z level, so it doesn't trigger your supermajority at the P and Z level. If you don't have it at the P and Z level, you have it at the city council level, which is a very nice tool to have. So P and Z, you don't have to worry about counting their 20%.
It's four out of five.
Yeah. You just, four out of five regardless. So you've got a whole stack that's more than 20%, all you still need is your four out of five. Once you go to the city council level, then that's going to, that's going to trigger your supermajority at, at the city coun, at the city council, which is the four out of five. Thank you. That's why I had four out of five in my mind. What's that?
At, at P and Z, it's five to nine, the majority vote on P and Z. We don't have a supermajority.
Yeah, correct, correct, correct. Thank you for setting me straight. I...
Good question. Does this apply to all things that P and Z reviews? Like would this apply to the Petrowans? If there are...
No. Excellent question. Does this apply, does the 200-feet rule apply to everything that P and Z does? No. It just applies to zoning, to zoning ca, to your zoning cases. Public hearing type cases for zoning only, does not apply to Platts, um, you know, and I'll, you know, I guess Platts and then the changes that you do to your, to your ordinances. But does not, does not apply to that, just to the zoning, zoning protest. Um, and we have a rule in some of...
But that would include conditional use permits?
Correct.
It does, it does, and the CUP is the type of zoning...
Yeah. And we're going to talk about conditional use permits and I'm glad you said that because a lot of people don't realize that a conditional use permit is truly a zoning change. So that's, that's, that's good. Um, again, so doesn't trigger the supermajority at the planning and zoning, still need the four out of five when you get to the city coun...
Five out of nine.
No, it's, at, at the P and Z, you still just need, you just need your, your votes of four.
Five out of nine.
No, 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 no.
The supermajority does not count at the planning and zoning.
And five out of nine is just a majority.
Majority.
That's right.
So, but, but you...
They aren't used to nine, are they?
Nor are we used to five either.
Five, five is killing me. Five is killing me. Five is killing me. Five votes at the P, at the P and Z. Great, this is being televised.
We're a majority of P and Z. Just, let's not use numbers. Let's say, we're a majority of P and Z, we're good to go.
That's why I'm an attorney, I'm not good with the numbers. I'm not good with the numbers. Five out of the, next time I'll remember, it's five to move forward to the city council with approval. We get to the city council, triggers a supermajority at city council, which is four. Four is your majority number at city council. All right, we got it. Let's not go back.
So if, let's say you only get four votes at the P&amp;Z level, but it still goes to council as not having a majority. And so we, you still have to have a supermajority on.
Yeah, so even, so even you have the, even if you have that stack of protests, you still got to get, you still got to have that supermajority, whether you have that stack of protests or not, because it didn't move forward with the, with the recommendation.
Here's the thing on a protest. It matters not what planning and zoning says.
Right, that's what I call the challenge.
It's four out of five, council has to agree. That's right. And we, we, in, in the, the challenge with council is a forum makes four. And you got to have a majority of those present, except when you have a protest and then all four would have to vote yes. So it becomes even more cumbersome when we get to council, the way the charter's written.
All right, so let's talk about the tools. We talked about spot zoning earlier. What are some kind of our tools to get over the hurdles of all our, all the straight zoning classifications that we have? Plan developments. Plan developments are one of my favorites. Overlay districts. You use overlay districts? Think you use plan, you have, you have plan development as a tool? I don't know how often you use plan developments here in the city.
A lot.
A lot? Okay, great. And then we have the wonderful conditional use permit that Patterson recognized it is a zoning change, and that may, that made my day. I may not get four out of five, but that made my day, is, is recognizing that, that.
Mr. Green, I'm, I'm an attorney too.
Okay, well, there you go. All right, all right. All right, so let's talk a little bit about, a little bit about plan developments, and that's contained in section 32 of your, of your zoning code. And the reason why I like, I think we like plan developments, everyone likes plan developments, is because it, it really allows you to spot zone, is the way that I, simple as terms. And when you go back to your base, your base zoning districts, we have our base zoning districts, and we're, and they're so rigid, we can only do so many things with, with those base zoning districts. And when you, you have a base zone in that plan development, but you can, you can manipulate those, I don't say manipulate, but you can soften the rule.
It's negotiated.
It's, it's, correct. Contract zoning, spot zoning.
Negotiated.
Negotiated, all right. We'll go with the.
It's not the same.
Because, because, because a plan development, essentially a tool that we allow to loosen the zoning regulations.
The difference is going to be that the plan development should have a minimum requirement of acreage that you can use for plan development to be a tool. And anything less than that, it's truly spot zoning and it will not happen. So that's the thing to remember. There will be places in downtown that are so small that they won't meet the requirements to be a plan development. So you couldn't go in there and zone it. But the plan development becomes a tool when a certain threshold is met for acreage size that allows us to then go in and develop that according to the characteristics that work to make it compatible with the things around it. That's the negotiation that Lisa's referencing as to why that's important. But spot zoning happens when it's less than what would be allowed in a plan development, and we just can't ever do that.
And, and the law doesn't, and the law doesn't state what that minimum acreage may be. US, the city can set, do set what that minimum acreage can be, and it varies from city to city.
And right now, it's three acres. Anything less than three acres is not eligible for a plan development.
And, and so you have the max, you have the minimum at three acres, and other cities I've worked with have, have, because development has changed so much and there's mixed uses sort of been the, and we had, we had the, we had the traditional mall, right? Everybody went to the mall back in the eighties. But what started happening, when the malls started kind of dying away, in the late eighties, early, I guess it's more like the mid nineties, when the mall, the traditional mall died away, you had a lot of, you had this whole idea of mixed use. And that's when the whole plan developments, you saw more and more plan developments, because you could take a general retail, something that was zoned predominantly general retail, and add these other uses that would not be allowed under the use chart, such as, such as high density. And you could, you could make a mixed use. And so, uh, plan developments are a great tool to use. Overlay, you know, overlays are a little bit more difficult. You can't manipulate them as much with the plan developments, negotiate them as much as you do with, as you do with the plan developments, but they're great tools. And we use them in one of my cities where we have a lot of industrial districts. And in those industrial districts, we have cement plants that want to come in, and, and we allow the cement plants in because of the location of, of where the city is in Texas, and we allow those cement plants in. And we'll bring them in as plan developments. But one of the things that we can do with that plan development is we can control the other types of uses that would go within that plan development. So there's other industrial uses, sexually oriented businesses, that we may allow industrial uses, that we can actually go and say, we don't want these in this area. And we also have, you can future zone. So when they're done with the quarry, done with the pits, when that use is finished, you can say, okay, here are the uses that will be allowed. We've actually done this in Midlothian, where once we start phasing out the cement plant, then general retail starts, very, toward what? Not into Austin, as you see, where you have the general retail. So it's just not an open pit that allows industrial, that you're going to end up seeing people storing cars on and, you know, storing their, storing their equipment. So again, it, it's a great tool. It always starts with a base zoning. You want to specify those uses that are permitted within the PD. So it may have a base zoning of general retail, and you can say, hey, we'll allow all uses in general retail, and in addition to that, we'll allow these uses. Or you can say, we'll only allow these uses. And you can exclude uses that are in the general retail. Uh, you can deviate from your base zoning regulations setbacks, and we have, we have certain setback requirements. You can, you can deviate from those. We're using, um, uh, plan developments right now in a lot of the, one of the cities, they have a masonry requirement, I believe it's 90% masonry. They have a couple neighborhoods that are coming in and wanting to be developed or redeveloped, and they're wanting to put in those, the craftsman homes. And the craftsman homes don't have that 90% masonry requirement. They have the big, large, you know, southern porches and have the, instead of the wood, a lot of made with, I think it's cement, cement, cementous board now that they're using on them. So we use the plan development to relax the masonry requirements, to relax the setback requirements, even relax the, the requirements for the roofing material. They want to use a different type of roofing material. So again, very, very helpful tool in trying to be creative with your development. As far as conditional use permits, conditional use permits are allowed in a base zoning district, are only allowed in a PD if specifically identified at the time of the PD approval. So you may have a plan development, and then you may have a conditional use permit that goes within, that goes within that plan development. So those you need to keep, keep a hold of, because we know with conditional use permit, uses change, conditional use permits need to be amended, so that can become a little bit more challenging if you're doing conditional use permits within the plan development. Better just to do it in the plan development, identify that use, make that deviation, so you don't have the conditional use permit on top of it, unless it's required.
So we need that.
You, you write that deviation into your plan, you write that deviation into your plan development.
Basically, your plan development agreement looks like your zoning ordinance.
Yep.
I mean, it, it, but it's specific to that per, but it looks like a zoning ordinance. It'll have a use chart, it will have your setbacks and your.
Deviations, what's your deviations?
You know, what, like, what is permissible. It looks like a zoning ordinance, it's just a negotiated.
But that's not your question.
No. My question is, so what if you didn't think of that? You know what I mean? You amend, that's what I, that was my question. So you can amend, it could be preferable to maybe a conditional use.
Yes, because when you've got a plan development and you overlay it with a conditional use permit that's on top of your base zoning, then it gets complicated when you begin to peel it back as to where the authority starts and ends. So what he's suggesting is, is if you've got a plan development, don't put a conditional use permit, just amend the plan development so that it doesn't get complicated.
Ideally, we recommend, and we amend it, and then the council or the legislative body, y'all make the decision. We review it and make a recommendation. We recommend it. We recommend it.
Ideally, staff is going to take care of that. When somebody comes in and says, this is what I want to do, the staff is going to say, well, you're in a plan development, so let's talk about an amendment and we'll put it on the agenda for planning and zoning. Or they'll say, in this, for what you're asking and for where this piece of property is, we recommend a conditional use permit. So staff is, the developer is going to have some inter, interaction with staff, then an agreement's going to be made, they'll move forward and come to planning and zoning.
But you could even further look at that and decide if maybe that recommendation that they're making, you know, I guess you can even look even deeper into that and say, you know, maybe it would be better, and then you collaborate with them and try and figure that out, hammer it out. And then staff will come up with something and we'll have questions that maybe want addressed or reflect a preferred course of action. So we can send it back to staff to work it up before we go with the recommendation.
And we'll talk a little bit about conditional, no, that's, good question, good question. And we'll talk a little bit about conditional use permits separate from the plan development, because conditional use permits are also zoning changes that run with, with, run with the land. And a lot of times, people want to put certain kind of conditions on them, and we got to remind ourselves that they do run with the land. Um, as far as plan developments, these are the things that we put in the plan developments. We have the legal description of the property, a concept, a detailed site plan. So when you look at that, you're from straight zoning, when you go and you look at that plan development, you're going to see the elevations, you're going to see the building materials. You can get as deep in the weeds as you want on that detailed site plan to really control what goes in there.
But let me make this asterisk note caveat. We do not regulate ugly. Not our job. And so when we do this, we need to be specific about types of material, not necessarily the color of the paint. And so oftentimes, what you get in the not my backyard is they think it's ugly. I won't live there, I won't do. We don't matter. We don't regulate ugly. So as he goes through this, let's, let's remember, the purpose needs to be tied back, not to personal preference, but to.
To the ordinances, to the ordinances.
But to the ordinance, that's right.
And what's allowed under your ordinances? And what, in the plan development, you may not allow that in general retail, but you allowed in another zoning district, but we're going to go ahead and incorporate that in the plan development and allow it in this particular area.
So on a conditional use permit, is, would it be, because I know you're saying it runs with the land? So if it goes, let's say you got a conditional use permit and then you went out of business and it just didn't work, whatever, does it go dark and then that evaporates? Or does it always stay there unless you take it? Can you take it away if the next person, if they sell it and come in, you can't change it ever? You can.
And what, let's, let's, we'll get to the conditional use permit, those are great questions, because that's, that's like in two slides, and we'll kind of go through the elements of the other conditional use permit. But as far as what goes on, on the plan development, the detailed site plans, intent at the PD, what is its purpose? You're going to have a, a base zoning, and then obviously you can have other proposals in there as far as parks, open space, and so forth. Uh, again, your minimum acreage is three acres here in the city of Bastrop. Uh, again, the P&amp;Z commission and the city council may approve the conceptual plan, detailed site plan, or any section of the plan separately or jointly in, in public hearings.
Let, let's talk about this one, because one of the things that we know is a challenge for us is speed. And so there may be an instance where we have an economic development opportunity that we can get if we can move quickly. And part of the challenge is, is that P&amp;Z meets once a month, we've approved an ordinance and it's got to be read twice, so there's a lot of time in the process. So one of the tools in our toolbox that might be an instance that we would have a joint meeting like tonight and have the developer come in and brief both at the same time, and that would be a way for us to be seen as more customer service friendly and expedite our process.
And we've done that in the past. We did that with Buc-E's as they were coming in, so we could, because there were some, some timelines for financing through the state, that we expedited it through joint meetings.
So I want to get, those are some, kind of some of the basics, um, that were requirements of the plan development, I'll let you skim on your own, and I won't get into the, into the deep details of the requirements from the P&amp;Z, when the, uh, plan developments come before the city council. And just a couple examples that I put in here of things that our firm has worked with before with plan developments, and talk about, um, plan development being a great tool, and this was a City Line project where we actually had, um, uh, several acres of land that you had a mixed use, and sort of the newest type of mixed use. You know, traditionally, we saw retail with multifamily. And now we're starting to see more of these mixed use, even in some of the smaller suburbs, of retail more office or medical, um, office with, with some type of residential, uh, maybe even with some type of convention center or hotel. So again, you've got all these different uses, when you go back to your general, your general zoning categories, that wouldn't be allowed. You could never put those together in one, one simple general retail area. You've got medical, you've got office, you've got multifamily, all these different uses in this, in the one area. Things also create, do with the plan development, is you can phase a plan development, if it's a giant piece of property that you want to control, you can have a conceptual plan and then just a detailed site plan for maybe phase one. And you put in there, okay, when phase two or phase three or phase four develops, it needs to come back to the planning and zoning, and back to the city council for approval. Then you create that plan development, now with phase one, then with phase two, and, and you can just, I mean, it can be a living document that you can modify over the years, but still continue, continue to control that area more so than you would if it was straight, if it was straight zoning. And if you have a major change, or someone wants to make a major change in that use that's not put on that site plan, guess what they have to do? They got to come back to you and get that approval. So you do have that control.
You just say, hey, this is a plan development. You don't have to say what it is. You can just face it and then decide where to go.
Correct, yeah, correct. You can have, still have the base zoning on there, and you can, you can just leave it blank for phase two, three, or four, or you could even say, okay, we know in phase three, we want to have, that's going to be the retail owner with a hotel, and you can just have a general concept. But you can, again, you can, you can always change that. You can always change that. And that's why I use this document, um, that was in the city of Richardson. That document changed, the types of uses changed, but that PD was placed for, you know, and it still is in place today with the different uses coming in, from, from restaurants to hotels to movie theaters to multifamily and to, and to State Farm, which took up the City Line project. So, and here's a picture or rendition of what it looks like today. So you have large, clearly Bastrop, but, uh, that's a long, uh, long 75. So again, another example, the city of Alton we did was just basically a, a village, uh, which had, had that mixed component of all the different types of uses. And this is basically, this, as you can see, is more of the detailed site plan. This is when we talk about a detailed site plan, we got the parking, we got the names, we got the uses, we got the roads. Um, this is more detailed, it's not just a, a simple conceptual, conceptual plan. Okay, now your favorite, we've been waiting all night for, is your conditional use permits. Some places refer to specific use permits or special use permits, but conditional use permits. Conditional use permits can be a lot of fun from an attorney's aspect, and, and I spend a lot of time advising my clients on how to use conditional use permits or not, not the pitfall of a conditional use permit. As Patterson said, conditional use permits are a zoning change. They are zoning change. They run with, they run with the property. So for instance, if I have a restaurant, and my restaurant wants to have a drive-through, your code requires, because it has a drive-through, I have to come to you and get a conditional use permit. So I'm before you wanting to get a conditional use permit for my restaurant, and my restaurant is going to be McDonald's, all right? And I just need a drive-through. When I issue that conditional use permit, I can say, you know, if you're a Wendy's, if you're a Wendy's, I'd give you that conditional use permit. We already have a McDonald's, we don't need another one. We don't look at the, the type of u, or the type of tenant, but we look at that use. We use the conditional use permits to do what? To regulate what I call the secondary effects that might occur with that, with that type of business, and we'll get into the detail. But as far as a, a conditional use permit, same thing goes for zoning. You got to have a public hearing, notice in the paper, 200-feet rule, and then the commission makes the recommendation to city council. The reason why I talk about the end user being so important is because many times, we will have citizens, whether it's the majority of the citizens or a vocal minority, that may come and speak out against the actual tenant that's going to go in there and say, hey, deny that conditional use permit because of the tenant, you know? We don't want Buc-E's, but we want 7-Eleven. We don't get down into the weeds of those types of details. If that use is permitted, and the only reason they're coming forward with a conditional use permit, that was not a plug for 7-Eleven, by the way. If that use is, is, uh, that conditional use permit is for that drive-through, that's what we're looking at. What are the secondary effects of that, of that drive-through going to be? So is a CUP considered, your little quiz, your, your hour quiz to see if you're awake, is a CUP considered an amendment to the comprehensive zoning? You know, the answer to that is what? Yes. Yes. May conditions be imposed and require compliance before issuance of a certificate of occupancy? Yes. You can put conditions on your CO, on your, on your CUP and say, you're not going to get a certificate of occupancy before you meet these following requirements. And I, I jump up and down all the time when, when the building inspector, whoever's, whoever is responsible for issuing the certificate of occupancy, does these conditional certificates of occupancy. And then what happens? You know, the developer leaves and you never get, you never meet the basic requirement for the CUP, so you lost your power, and then you're, you're going to go what? Revoke the CUP? No, it's going to be a very difficult process to have to go through the planning and zoning, to go through the P and Z, to try to take that CUP away because it truly was a zoning change.
The, the, the thing about CUPs that people often miss is, don't worry about what's standing before you. Worry about what's going to come behind it. Because the easy decision's what's standing in front of you. But when it runs with the land, you've opened the door to anybody. And so often, we get tunnel vision and we focused about today. We need to be worried about tomorrow. So, if the business that we see coming in, we like, have we prepared ourselves for what's going to follow? Does that make sense? And we don't always focus on that because we're so excited about what's standing before us. We don't think about, okay, when that goes away, now what are we left with? And that's when it becomes a code enforcement problem. That's when...
Basically, on base zoning, they want to come in and do something, a bedded breakfast is a perfect example.
A lot of times, a way to remember, when we, when we go through your, you go through your use chart and you've got that C that where everywhere needs a conditional use permit. We've really identified that type of business. We want them to come in, they're really, they're allowed by right if they get the CUP. And we put that C in there because what we're really trying to do is we've decided that business, there's going to be possibly some secondary effects with that business, whether it be lighting, whether it be noise, whether it be the drive-through, that we... Off-street parking. Off-street parking. Be able to control through the conditional use process. We can, we, more scrutiny of that type. But, but we also need to be, yes, sir. Questions?
I just want to make a comment. These are some of the things we talked about when we, uh, went with Form Base Code, which I think is a...
Overlay district, yep.
Which, which works out well. We just kind of stick along those lines, everything works great.
Yeah, and, and too, the thing you need to remember is the expectation of, of the developer when they come in and you have these uses in there. And the, and the one thing we don't want to do is whether we're down zoning, whether we're taking, taking a use away, is running into issues of what we, what's called constitutional takings, right? Developers have the right to develop their property. If you take that right away from them, that's when you run into the constitutional issues of a true takings. And those things are what, that'll get a city attorney jumping out of his seat real quick when they, whether it's the P and Z or city council, doing things or saying things that would lead to, um, true takings, um, of deprivation of, of their property. And that's why council members and P and Z members, you know, we want your certifications. And there's reasons in your, there's parts in your code where you give justifications on zoning cases. But we need to be careful when we get, when we speak and give those justifications for approval or denial. We don't say things that are going to lead a developer, someone to believe that, that you're setting them up for takings because they will use that against you if they have that opportunity. Do you have any comments?
No, and on the CUP process, by repealing it, um, we just have to always stop and make sure that we haven't taken something of significant value from a property owner when we repeal it. And I'm sure our code has a process that certain things have to be met. But part of your question about can we take it away? Yes, we can, as long as we stop and pause. Have we made sure we have not significantly impacted the property owner's right to do something that has value?
Yeah, it, and it's, real simple example is, is on the third bullet point is if you have a building, if the building or premise of the land under which the conditional use was originally issued and they want to make it larger and larger, they're going to have to come back before you and amend that conditional use. Your conditional use might have that site plan, detailed site plan attached to it as an exhibit. That will have to be amended. If they're before you and you said, you know what? This just isn't a good place anymore for this type of use. We're just going to revoke your CUP. Guess what? Go pack up, you can no longer operate your business. Would that raise to a level of a constitutional takings? Absolutely. That's a, that's a takings on its face. We don't like the type of people that's shot there. Therefore, we're going to take that away from, raise it to the level of constitutional takings. Uh, minor, uh, and then you do have in your code, it does say, minor changes or alterations may be approved by the director of planning. Doesn't give examples of what those minor alterations, minor changes or alterations will be, but it doesn't, but it does allow those. Um, a couple of things to consider with conditional use permits is, is that use harmonious and compatible with the surrounding existing areas? And these are, these are sort of your checklist as you're sitting up there making a decision on do I want to issue conditional use permit? You can have these bullet points right next to you, uh, when you're making that decision because you're going to have to, your code requires you to pretty much go through this process. Is the applicant's request activities, are they normally associated with the permitted use that's within that base zoning district? Well, obviously, yes, because you've identified that use as being allowed as a conditional use permit in that base zoning district. Uh, nature of the use reasonable? And you may truly be, come to a place where if it's a conditional use permit for a business that has a drive-through, you may think, this just really is not a good place based on traffic patterns, based on the way that the, the business is situated off the highway, left turn, you know, left turn lanes, right turn lanes. It's just not a good place for a business to be, regardless, a business to be with a, um, with a, with a drive-through. And, and there's absolutely no, no issue with that. A recent example I dealt, was, dealt with was a car wash. And, and the guy jumped up and down and said, and he was required to get a conditional use permit or we call it a special use permit in this city. And the council and the P and Z, they wrestled with it. And they said, you know, traditionally, where this is going to be located, cars are going to be backed up on the road because it was a full service. And, and they knew it wasn't, there wasn't much room for the cars to move in and park and get in queue to go through this, uh, full service. So, their concern that was that it was going to back up onto, onto the major roadway. Is that a legitimate reason to deny the, the conditional use permit? Absolutely. It absolutely is. Does that raise to the level of takings? No, it doesn't. Were there things that that developer could have done differently to allow for that business to succeed on that property? Yeah, probably. He could change up, uh, some of the, some of the, the lanes. Um, all right, so let's go ahead and go on to...
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So, if we, um, say P and B is going to approve a cup with specific conditions and we enumerate one through five, you know, we want to be specific dates. Um, and say council either wants to strike one of those or add some of their own, are they allowed?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. Again, they're, they're, they're making recommendations. They all, they're being too tough. Them must have had a bad day, late meeting, put all these conditions. You can take those away or you can add conditions to it. You can, absolutely, you can add conditions to it, so.
One of the things that, um, you will sometimes see, uh, happen, and again, it's, it's, and it's an expedient thing. We, we have to balance the public's need with the developer's money. Um, sometimes what will happen is, is conversations will happen at P and Z that will spark people in the community that then want to engage council. And things will happen between the P and Z meeting and council that council can mitigate by adding something. And rather than kicking it back to the process, having to renotice and redo, council just deals with it at that point. So, sometimes conversations are spurred because I didn't know about it and now that I do, I want to get involved.
If, if you look at the second bullet point up here, and I applaud you for having this in your code because this is an excellent tool and it does talk about CUPs and we talk about running with the land, vested rights and so forth. But once somebody comes in and gets a CUP, if I'm the developer, the builder, I come in and get my CUP and I decide I'm slow, I'm just not going to, and I don't get, and I go one year and I don't get that building permit, uh, I'm sorry, the certificate of occupancy issued, um, within the one year of it being, of it being, um, issued, of the CUP being issued, I don't get my certificate of occupancy. Guess what? Council, you get to look at it again and make a determination. Are we going to give them an extension or is it going to go away? Now, I caution you because a lot, some cities that have this in here do nothing. And the argument is, if you do nothing, does that CUP magically disappear? I'm going to tell you, the answer to that is going to be no. That would not hold up. You're going to have to take some action and make that CUP go away. It's almost like a zoning change because no certificate of occupancy has, has been issued. So, that's a trap you don't want to get in is three years later, somebody comes and builds and you're like, what were they thinking three years ago by issuing that CUP? Oh, it's no longer good because you didn't get that certificate of occupancy. Well, no, you didn't take any actions to, to take that CUP off the books, if you will. Uh, because again, it is a zoning change and should be reflected in your zoning changes.
So, if you try and take it after that period of time, that should be really considered taken.
Correct, correct.
And that's why you should be out of the city.
All right, so, uh... My favorite example of mine, so, and I think, I think we've probably, um, gone through this extensively with CUPs, but cellular phone stores, and that cellular phone store must obtain a CUP to locate in neighborhood services. And it's denied. And the reason for denial or one of the council members' voices, the reason for denial is because we don't like the type of customers that that store, your store has traditionally attracted, okay? Is that a statement we want to be making, um, from the diocese, either as a P and Z member or as a city council member? Absolutely not. We do not, because we're not looking at the, at the end user, the tenant. We're looking at the use. CUP is required, this is my favorite example, the beer barns. A CUP is required for a beer barn because the beer barn will have a drive-through. This is a trick question, okay? The beer barn's going to have a drive-through. Um, not to get, uh, into the alcoholic beverage code, but we know in the Texas alcoholic beverage control is the law does not act, the act does not allow us to treat a business differently than another retail establishment because it sells alcohol. So, we can't say, we don't want you because you sell alcohol. We have to treat them all the same. So, if you're in, in a wet community for the sale of beer and wine or the sale of liquor, you've got to allow those to go in any other establishment you would allow commercials to go in. So, the beer barn, we're not going to give you the, uh, CUP, the drive-through because you sell beer and wine. Can you say that? No, absolutely not. Is that a violation of, of the Texas alcoholic beverage control? Yes, absolutely. You can say, we don't want you because of other secondary effects would result in your drive-through, not from the sale of beer and wine, but what would result in the drive-through, placement of cars, stacking, traffic, lighting, noise, those types of secondary effects with any drive-through, uh, business in that area. All right. All right, my favorite two, plating and zoning. It's kind of like what comes first? Chicken or the egg, right? So, what comes first? Plating or zoning? Plating comes first, right? And then comes zoning. Um, plating is a, uh, plating is essentially a non-discretionary exercise. And when I say non-discretion, non-discretionary, non-discretionary exercise, it's a checklist exercise. And I did put that up there because it truly is, it truly is a checklist. Where zoning is discretionary. As the city council, as the planning and zoning making recommendations, it's discretionary whether or not we want to zone particular areas. Plating, we don't have it, we don't have that choice. It's a checklist. As far as, um, plating procedures in the preliminary plat, that's all handled under 212 of the local government code. And then chapter 10 subdivisions, uh, which is in your code. And we have preliminary plats of entire areas that are subdivided, must be submitted to the director of planning and development, be placed before the P and Z commission, not less than 15 days prior to the meeting at which approval is sought. Plats must be accepted as administratively complete by the director of planning and development if it contains the information listed in paragraphs 410.1, 4... So, you have, you have a checklist, you have that checklist in your ordinances. And we talked about plating being, um, ministerial in nature, it being a checklist, non-discretionary. When the developer walks in with the plat and submits it, okay? When they submit that plat, and we now have the vesting laws or rules that we've had now for somewhat 10, 10, 12 years we've been dealing with it. When they submit it, if it meets all the requirements, it's deemed to have been filed. From the date that it's deemed to have been filed, we start the clock. And that plat must be approved within 30 days. The codes, uh, the, the local government code says a plat. Talk about preliminary final plats because we have preliminary final plats in the city of Bastrop. Most cities have preliminary or final plats. But interesting enough, the local government code never makes that distinction of preliminary and final plats. It just says, a plat must be approved within 30 days of it being filed with the city. Um, and if it's not, then it's deemed to be approved. It's administratively, it's deemed to be approved. So, they have put that protection in place because traditionally, what would happen is the developer and cities may, may start playing games with each other and they start taking their time, um, you know, plats and they'd sit on them for a period of time. Uh, and now we have the protections or the developers have the protections. There's 30 days. If they don't deem it to be approved within 30 days at the P and Z and/or at the city, and at the city council, then it's deemed to be approved.
So, tell me, just, do you mind to talk just a tiny bit about, uh, what an administrative plat is?
No, there's, there's no administrative, no administrative plat. There's no such thing as administrative plat.
What we're talking about is administrative.
Administrative approval, administrative approval.
Okay. So...
Does it mean that it meets the requirements that we set forth? We're good to go. We don't get to say, well, I don't like this or can you move that? Or if it meets all the requirements, it's approved.
All right. So, are you required to go to planning and zoning and council if it meets? Do preliminary plats have to be approved by council or can you just say?
No, you can actually, you can, you can, you can have, you can have preliminary plat approval at the planning and zoning. And you can then have final plat approval at the city, at the city council. You guys have, y'all have, all final plats go to city council. And I believe you also see all preliminary plats, don't you? Yeah, you see them both. So, and that's, that's an ordinance.
And the reason I'm asking is because I know we've, we've said before, so you've put something in front of me, it meets all the requirements, I can't vote no. Is this not a waste of time? Mayor Protim, do you have a thought on this?
That's, that's what I've said in the past is, if it, if it meets all the requirements, why are we even looking at it? Why are we voting on something that has to be approved?
Yeah, that's what we want. We'll have to go to the city council. Um, and, and that, that is a great question, but you also have another provision in your code. Um, you are required in your code, which I find interesting, is preliminaries submitted must have a, a list of all adjacent property owners and other property owners within 200 feet of the property to be subdivided with addresses as recorded by the Bastrop, uh, CAD and...
CAD.
And, and then the P and Z commission shall review the preliminary plat within 45 days from the date that the plat is accepted by the planning and development director. You have 45 days in there. That's where I talked about the distinction. Code says plat must be approved within 30 days. You have 45 days. There, there's some, some legal scholars that will argue...
Will be getting this fixed.
There, there are some legal scholars that will argue with you that preliminary, since preliminary is never named in the local government code, that, probably given, since this is televised, giving away all the, all the arguments, right? Uh, that final plat is truly what they're talking about with the 30-day approval. So, you have 45 days preliminary, 30 days final, which is good. Um, most municipalities, it's 30 and 30. They go with 30 and 30. Uh, but you have, you have 45 in this. And you, you can't turn dirt in here, you probably, you can't dirt, turn dirt in here until you do the, until you do the final plat, correct? So, you, that's your saving grace. Dirt can't be turned until you get that final plat in anyway, so.
If the city finds that 30-day window too narrow to get the work done they need to, they can't force someone to say, sign away their right to 30 days.
Can you? Great question. Can you sign away your rights of that 30 days? There is, uh, no case law to date, great lawyer answer, right? There's no case law to date that addresses that issue. There are, um, municipalities that will, and there's developers that will say, hey, I'll sign away. You know, it, it'll say, I come in, I submit it, right? It meets all the requirements, so it's deemed filed. And they say, you know, developer, we've got a really busy month, we're not going to get to this until after Christmas, right? So, I need 60 days. And developer writes down and signs away, his waives the 30 days. Representing the city, I'd argue, yeah, that's valid. Uh, someone else may argue on the other side, it's not valid. So, there's really no case law that has really addressed that, that issue. I'm not comfortable with it. I'm not comfortable with having developers do that.
And since we can't change it, why would we put ourself in peril? It would be different if the plat came before you and you could do something with it. But since we can't, why would we go to court over something that at the end of the day we couldn't change? If, if, whether it took 30 days, 45 days, or 60 days, if you could affect change by what, signing and saying, then I would think that would be a great deal. My concern is, is if I'm going to end up having to defend something, I want to defend something, you've got to say it. If it's a checklist thing, let's just get this fixed, make it work and fight about the stuff that we can, we can do something with.
And I've had that argument, um, over and over again with some of the smaller cities or just it, that I represent that have the same issue that you brought up. They just don't have, especially today, you know, there's so much development going on in certain areas of Texas, they just can't get through them all. And they're like, well, we get it from developers to waive them. Well, for my, I, you know, my job as the attorney is to tell them, it says 30 days in the code, you have 30 days. If you're going to get these waivers, here's the risk. I'm not going to advise you to do that. You need to get it done within 30 days. Here's the risk. If you don't, I've actually had a developer who would argue, argue with me that, oh, my client, he didn't know what he was doing. You know, because it's usually not, not, not their attorney, it's somebody else that's just submitting the plans and they just sign on a piece of paper, usually they rip out of a notebook. I hereby waive my 30 days pursuant to the, you know, the local government code. I'm not comfortable with that. I don't want to, I don't want to have to make that argument for them. Uh, but it, you know, then it's deemed approved unless you want, is a plat that wasn't, at least it met all the basic requirements, so then it's administratively approved by, by law, yes.
And I'm sorry for going back to this, but on the preliminary plat, if we changed, are you saying we have to change our zoning code that it doesn't have to come to council or it's required by the local government code that it, that a preliminary plat has to be approved by council?
You can, you can change, you can change your code that you can have preliminary plat approval at the P and Z level and it can stop at the P and Z level. And that will actually be a, that will put your P and Z, um, from advisory, they'll have And that will actually be a, that will put your P and Z from advisory, they'll have final decision making when it comes to one thing, and that would be a preliminary plat approval.
But it has to come to at least to planning and zoning. You wouldn't put that to staff. You have it come to at least to a board.
Absolutely, yeah, yes, correct, correct. It has to get approval, it has to get approval by, by the planning and zoning.
The, the only cautionary risk is, is P and Z only meets once a month. Council meets twice a month. If P and Z met twice a month, then I think the choice becomes real clear. But right now, they only meet once a month. And depending on when it comes in the door, we can get it reviewed and get it on an agenda by somebody. That's narrowing our window if we miss their meeting of the month.
Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's been our practice that it doesn't come to council unless it's been to P and Z first. So we, and maybe that's an adjustment that we make if it comes to the, to the body whoever's meeting first. But we, to your point, it doesn't matter. If it has to go to P and Z first anyway, we're not ever picking up the time because it doesn't come to council before going to P and Z.
But the law says thirty days, so we've got a, a more basic fundamental, our, our rule has granted authority we don't have. So we got to go back to the thirty day rule and then we've got to, to fix that. So we'll work it out with the flow chart.
Well, so I would kind of pull council because I think we're allowed to do that in, in this meeting. It seems to me if it's a checklist like that, that it can either be approved by P and Z or it can be approved by council, but only one body required and the one that's meeting the soonest seems to be a reasonable way to move things forward.
I agree with that. And you could have staff bring back some examples of the change of red line language that could change that process.
At least you would want to hold a special workshop if you could talk about doing that.
We've done that in the past, but there's a.
If it's a really, really big, big thing.
If it's a big project.
But if it's more fundamental, we'll go there.
I, I would hate to make them come for a quorum on something you can't change. I mean, that's what we're talking about. So if, if their agenda happens to be that, we'll put it on there. If you're meeting, why make five people come in to check a box on something they can't say no over?
I agree.
Might as well use the six of us that have to come anyway, right? If, if that's the closest meeting.
There's some other things that we could also look at, look at. Government that allow, if we could, you may want to look at final plats too. And if you want to, if the council wants to see the prelim, the, the council, P and Z and the council want to see the preliminary plat, but then they want only the final plat to go to the P and Z, we can look and see if that's an option too. That would also speed up your process. Because then you saw the preliminary plat, you saw everything that was in the preliminary plat, final plat then could just be, if, if we can do that, we can take a look at it and just go to the, we can bring back options. One thing about plats I do want to mention is we shouldn't be approving plats with conditions. It happens, but it shouldn't happen. It's. A preliminary plat will be approved conditioned upon X, Y, and Z happening. If they're minor things, make sure that those things are listed out in your motion so when the final plat comes back, that those things that you requested to be changed are captured in the final plat. But we should really try to move away from ever approving plats with major conditions being attached to them. Small, minor things, north, south, east, west, roads, lot alignments can be changed for the, for the final plat. I don't know if that's a practice or not. And then again, I just reiterate, the thirty day approval, it doesn't, doesn't make it, if you don't make the shot clock. So again, reiterate plat review, plat review is ministerial. There's no exercise of discretion in plat approval and immunity from personal liability is lost if the action is not discretionary. So because you don't like the fact that the plat is going to allow multifamily and your underlying zoning allows multifamily and you deny the plat, when the question is asked, does the plat meet all of the requirements? Yes, it meets all the requirements. Who to approve? Everyone approves, one disapproves. Not a big deal. As a city attorney, I'll go up to that council member and say, why did you vote? Well, I knew it was going to pass, right? That's what, oh, tell me. But it fails. If everyone thinks it's going to pass and they vote no, again, that is where you subject yourself to personal liability because it was not a discretionary action. It was not a discretionary action. And I've been in the position before where that's happened. We take a quick recess, we go back into executive session, we come out, come out and we have unanimous vote for approval of the, of the, of the plat. So again.
So how can you call an executive session for that? Is it like an emergency?
Legal advice.
Executive session?
That's, that's why I read that paragraph before every meeting. So that if we need to go into executive session, we can.
Okay.
That's, that's why I read that.
Anything on the agenda, David, at that point in time, if he thinks that you've put yourself and/or the city in peril, he has an obligation to call a recess and to do just what Joe said.
And council members too, we've got a true legal question and you ask your city attorney and your city, you know, this isn't really something we want to air out in the public and the mayor can read, the general provision for legal advice from the city council and you can go back in executive session. Planning and zoning, same thing. You can go to executive session with your attorney. You can call your attorney on the phone. Your attorney doesn't have to be there at the meeting. The rules on that changed several years ago to allow for consultation with the attorney via, via the phone. But you always want to tell the public, we're going back into executive session on legal advice and we're going to call our attorney because sometimes the public may ask, wait a minute, the attorney's not here. How are they going back into executive session to obtain legal advice? So always a good idea to remind the public, we've spoken, we have spoken with our city attorney or spoken with our legal counsel while we were in executive session and, and just kind of get that on the record so it's out there. Can a plat be tabled? You know the answer to that? No, a plat cannot be tabled. It's again, approved with operational law within, within thirty days. Can a plat be approved subject to staff working out certain problems? That's what I talked a little bit about earlier. And yes, if they're minor conditions, and again, example. Approved, approved, subject to it being corrected. Not advisable to approve a plat subject to a major condition or modification, you know, changing the number of lots. Wouldn't advise that. Okay, we're getting down to the good stuff real quick. I want to talk a little bit about the Open Meetings Act. All of our, whether it's the P and Z or whether it's the council, the Open Meetings Act does apply to those. Special sessions, regular called sessions. You guys are very transparent, transparent here in the city of Bastrop with even televising workshops, so I applaud you for that. Again, and your government bodies also include our quasi judicial boards, commissions. But again, not advisory boards. I believe here you've taken the role of even, all your advisory boards are subject to the open meetings and that's what practice is of most municipalities. Again, P and Z is advisory unless you change it to plat approval, then they'd be advisory with, with the final decision made in one area and still, they are still required to comply with the Open Meetings Act. Again, these are just a list of the bodies that are subjected to the act and your local policy requires that all, all of them meet the requirements. So what do we mean by meet the requirements of the Open Meetings Act? It's our posting. More importantly though, any discussion or deliberation between a quorum, majority or between a quorum and another person regarding public business or public policy, which the board controls, the supervisors are drawing which formal action is taken. So if prior to the meeting, everyone wants to meet down at the local grocery store and talk about the upcoming agenda item, okay, upcoming agenda items, if there's a quorum, does that violate the Open Meetings Act? And the answer to that is yes. And I'll tell you one of my, one of my little wars, my, my war stories, if you will, is one of the first cities that I went to was a small city and I would drive up to this town and I would get nervous. Every time that I had to go to this city, I would get nervous. And I, I always use the example, like when my mother used to drive me to parochial schools in the morning and we'd go up the hill, we're getting closer and closer to the Catholic school, I'd get more nervous and more nervous. There were a lot of nuns there, so I'd get nervous. Mom, please turn around, please turn around. Well, this is the way I felt when I was going to this city. And I sit, I stopped at the, I think it was McDonald's and I walked into McDonald's and it was a general law city at the time. And so there were five council members. I walk into McDonald's and four of the council members are all sitting around the table drinking coffee. I walked in. Sure enough, I walk in and they got their agendas down in front of them and they're going through the agenda. And I quickly decided not to get my coffee, get back in the car, went up to the hall and started thinking to myself, that's why those meetings only last ten minutes because they've already met at McDonald's and have gone through all the agenda items. So anyway, did I have an obligation to say something? Yes, absolutely I did. And did I? Yes. So again. As far as notice, seventy-two hours prior written notice, the date, hour, place or such, each meeting. And again, I always, I always say, look at your agenda item, you know, if you don't, and I always have to remind that council members or P and Z, look at the agenda item. Make sure the agenda item is enough for the public to understand what you're doing. And likewise, if you're in the meeting and you're start, you start talking about something and you look down at your agenda item and you're like, how is this related? Because I used to tell capital members when I think they're getting off the agenda item, okay, bring it back. Bring, bring it back to the agenda item. How is it related? If it's not, then you shouldn't be talking about it because the public has a right to know what you're deliberating, to hear you're deliberating and have a right to know when to deliberate it. So be careful with, you know, with the language on your agenda and, and look at it beforehand and be comfortable with it. And again, usually the more critical the topic, the more specific you want that notice to be. General descriptions are insufficient. Example, quick example, municipality was looking at a garbage contract, new garbage contractors and was in a meet, meeting that I wasn't at. They discussed the, the contractors and in that meeting, they decided that they would go ahead and completely remove recycling services from the city. Okay, did that meet the notice or posting requirements? Probably not. As far as internet posting, you are required to post on the internet. We touched on that earlier. The Open Meetings Act, what does not apply to? You can go to your conventions, you don't have to worry about posting it, seminars, workshops. If no formal action is taken and any discussion of public business is incidental. So again, if you go to the conventions, you don't want to be sitting around in, in a quorum and talking about an upcoming agenda item. You can talk about previous agenda items, but you don't want to be talking about upcoming agenda items. Social meetings unrelated to public business, your Christmas, the mayor's Christmas party, don't have to post the open meetings, don't have to post for that. Testimony before legislature and agencies. And then the newest one that we got from this legislative session is attendance by a quorum at a candidate's forum provided no formal action is taken and discussion of public business is incidental to the forum. So again, I think that's important because I know with a lot of my cities, when the councils were going in a quorum of, we're going to be at the candidate's forum, we were going, we were posting them as, although no action being taken, then a potential quorum of the council members would be present. So we no longer have to do that as long as no business is discussed. Secret deliberations, we know we don't want to deliberate, deliberate by telephone, whether it's one planning and zoning commissioner calling another planning and zoning commissioner, hey, how are you going to vote on that? I think I'm going to vote against it. And then that planning and zoning commissioner calls another planning and zoning commissioner, hey, how are you going to vote on that? I think, you know, even if it's three doing that, you're still going to be in violation of the Open Meetings Act. We call it the daisy chain, you don't.
Well, we're on the phone.
Yeah, yes, we, we don't want to do that. And today, what do we have? Not so much, no one uses the phone anymore. What do we do? We text message, okay? With text messaging and text messaging and open records, I'll, I'll touch on that briefly. Same thing, you can do the same thing with text messaging. You can violate the quorum using emails, text messages, voicemail, drive-in decisions. Don't want to do that. Again, don't meet in numbers of quorum, less than a quorum for purposes of secret, secret deliberation. And the most important, I put this in here on public information, and that's because of text messaging. What is public information? And public information has such a broad definition. And it's information that is written, produced, collected, assembled, or maintained under a law ordinance or in connection with the transaction of official business by or for a governmental body. Didn't mean to do that. What does that mean? It means when we as elected officials or appointed officials communicate on our personal devices about city business, I don't want to use the word official because you're like, what's official? If you're communicating about city business, that communication, that text message is subject to retention, subject to the Public Information Act, even though it's coming from your personal phone, your personal text message. You have an obligation to save that. Hopefully if you're sending it to somebody to the city on the city end, they're, they're printing it off and saving it. Text messages have, only within the last year are we seeing more and more decisions from the Attorney General as it relates to text messages. And they say their text messages are no different than sitting down and composing that email on your pers, you know, emails, we can just print them off, right? We got them. Same thing with text messages. That text message is subject to the act if it pertains to official city business. And I am seeing in my practice, almost every public information request that comes in is now, it used to be, you know, I want all the council members, all the emails between the council members regarding, you know, X, Y, and Z. Now it's I want all text messages and emails. So again, be cautious. I would love to tell you, don't ever text message, but realistically that, I can't. And I know you're going to use it. But be cautious of how you use your text messages. If it's a city, I don't, do they have city phones? If they have city, city, city-ish phones, that's great. It's there, use your city emails, they have city email accounts. Use your city emails to communicate as your personal emails. Sometimes we forget.
Oh, excellent.
Excellent, excellent. So those, those text messages are there. To be cautious. Yes, do not delete your text messages. Do not delete. Do not delete. If you delete it, it's, 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 it's still subject to the act.
Let, let me clarify something. If you have a city cell phone, you can delete your text messages because Andreas, they're all on the backup server. So they can find them and you don't have to have four bazillion things on your phone. Emails and text messages both, that's why you have a city cell. It's backed up on the server. He can do the search for them.
Then on planning and zoning, you don't.
Yeah. So if you find yourself, council, if you find yourself without your city phone, hold off and don't go to your personal phone to send that text message. You get that city phone in hand. Planning and zoning, remember, if you text from your personal phone.
Obligation, uh, the obligation is that you need to.
Quickly on executive sessions, we know they're limited to specific purposes with.
Communication is limited to legal advice.
Obviously with the city council, there's a lot more other areas of where you can go in and consult with your city attorney. Again, you must fit out provisions of executive session. Why you can go into executive session, read that out loud, read the specific provisions and then a general discussion or, or general description of what that executive session or the purpose of that executive session. Again, if it's for real estate, you don't have to say to go in to negotiate real estate at property one, two, three, main. You can say to negotiate a purchase sale agreement for property located within the city. You can be broad enough because again, you don't want to give away what property it is that you're negotiating. So you can be broad as it relates to that. And again, procedures for closed sessions, I'm sure you're comfortable with those, but a quick refresher is convene first, have a quorum. First convene is a quorum in open session. Announce that you're going into closed session. Announce the, the section numbers that you're going into.
Close session?
Not necessary. You don't have to make a motion to go into closed session. Some do, some, some cities do, some don't. When you return to open session, again, state your action if any, if no action to be taken, make sure you state.
No action to be taken.
Ad early in the meeting. If you, if you're, you're on camera, I highly, I always recommend that you come back out from executive session, go back on camera, say, you know, whether the, whether there is an action or there is no action to be taken. And make sure you keep a certified agenda of the, of the executive session or your attorney keeps a certified agenda or the mayor keeps a certified agenda of the executive session. And I'm going to skip through the violations. Videotaping? Is the public allowed to videotape you? Yes. And I put that up there now because what does the public love to do with their, with their cell phones? Love to videotape. So I had the mayor lean over to me in one of my meetings, they go, I don't like a videotaping meeting. Can I tell them to stop? No, mayor, you can't tell them to stop videotaping you. If you have a large number of media there that are videotaping, you can have them in it, you can, you can designate media areas if you have a big event, but you can exclude some, allow others, but you could have a designated area. That was kind of a, a, pretty quick. We have any questions? Yes, I know we kind of asked them as we went through. I hope this was helpful and kind of brought back some good memories and/or bad memories.
Yes.
I know, I know you're getting paid overtime right now to be here, so.
Any other questions?
Again, I appreciate the opportunity to come down here. Linda did drive me around Bastrop and I found it to be kind of a fascinating area. You've got many different terrain and it's, it's a great place. Again, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda, since we're in a work session, I don't have to read the full second item, do I? Or do you want me to?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Now Linda's up.
One of the things, just to provide a little context as to where we go from here, as I indicated, council had a very successful retreat. And really the purpose of the retreat was to provide some governance policies that we will move forward with. They created a vision statement, which pretty much is just ours, our roadmap, what we want to become and sets a defined direction for our growth. This talks about the purpose, really just serves as a foundation for broader strategic plan. The council's vision statement was a kind of a, a small adaptation of what's in the comprehensive plan. It's Bastrop, a welcoming community with a compassion for our diversity, a tapestry A tapestry of people, arts, and structures, preserving our history and character while embracing progress around our unique environment. And then they went on to look at our mission statement, which is our purpose. It really, again, talks about the goal of our company. And it is, I believe, the same thing that's in the comprehensive plan, and that is to continuously strive to provide efficient and proactive services that enhance our quality of life and achieve our vision. What's really helpful, I believe, are the focus areas. They identified nine areas that really focus on distinctive elements necessary for achieving our vision. And those focus areas are fiscal responsibility, economic vitality, and this is an area that impacts planning and zoning. And the definition of economic vitality is to create sustainability by leveraging tourism, infrastructure renewal and investment, enhancing public-private partnerships, efficient planning and development processes, and focusing on an inclusive and diverse environment that encourages entrepreneurial vision adventures. They talked about the importance of communication uniquely Bastrop. That's another area that will impact planning and zoning, because it's very important that we maintain and enhance our historical community feel by leveraging the unique combinations of community, cultural, and recreational assets that make Bastrop a special place to live and work. This could actually be one of the reasons we would do a plan development, is to figure out a way to keep that development uniquely Bastrop. So we would do a plan development to meet this particular focus area. Organizational excellence. Multimodal mobility. Transportation is something that is addressed in planning and zoning. So it is a need for improved mobility for all modes of transit. That includes walking, bicycling, motor vehicle, including managing the traffic congestion. Community safety. Keep citizens, businesses, and visitors safe. Unique environment. And then manage growth. And manage growth is to plan for and manage growth, development, and redevelopment to maintain Bastrop's unique feel and character. So I hope you're beginning to see now the reason for you being first on the list of joint workshop, because planning and zoning will have a lot of recommendations to help council meet the vision and mission statements set forth. Because we have so many priorities, one of the requests that I had of council was, please prioritize our priorities. So we kind of have a starting place. And this was the list that they put together. And notice up in the top right-hand corner, the commitment to our comprehensive plan. All of the work plan items that we're doing that fit in the comprehensive plan, there was a very specific request to do that. The development and permit system, to empower staff to negotiate within limits to meet city council goals. We talk about the joint workshops. And I do know that some of the things that will come from this are back on that focus group, and that is the development processes. One of the things that we are doing at a staff level is putting together an interim list and a permanent list. We've got to fix some things interminally, like this plating process, before we get to a wholesale code rewrite. A wholesale code rewrite could take two years, done right and done well. We've got to do some things that put some flexibility back in the process in the meantime. So you can anticipate this next year seeing a lot of specific issues or specific requirements. And I have met already with Wesley and Jennifer, and we've identified several things that will be coming to you prior to Christmas that would potentially be agenda items in the future. So just as a way to put this into context, we appreciate the foundation that Joe has given us. These are our focus areas. You can anticipate seeing him in the future as we get into some more of the more complicated things where we need to debate flexibility, and how do we use our tools and our toolbox to be creative, to protect the uniquely Bastrop. You'll see him again. So Mayor, that concludes my comments on 2B, and I would certainly encourage and want council to add to your thoughts on these items.
So for, thank you, Linda, for going over that and for these priorities, and fundamentally, with having this workshop together, I'm very interested. I know from my previous time on planning and zoning, to me, one of the outstanding issues was, I thought there was a request from planning and zoning to be involved in the in-plan developments. And I thought at one point, we even talked about having kind of a boilerplate, so we knew what the expectations were. Do you want to discuss that at all, Lisa? Or is that not something that planning and zoning is still interested in? Or where do we stand on that?
Well, I think because you're, we're seeing, we're seeing development agreements used more and more frequently. And I know that there have been circumstances in the past where a development agreement has been placed in front of us that we're asked to interpret or amend, or- And we said, well, we don't know what was even in this in the inception, and why it was even placed in there. So I do think it would be nice to at least let planning and zoning put eyes on it at some point during the process, simply so that they're informed regarding what's moving forward and moving through the pipeline, rather than have something spring up and say, well, we didn't even know what was going on. So I do think that's something that-
So is that something that you would want on a future, like at our next meeting? Would that be an agenda item? Or is that just something that you want to take care of on a case-by-case?
I think it would almost have to be case-by-case, simply because each development agreement is its own special breed of care.
At one point, we had talked about having a boilerplate of sort of, these are the items that planning and zoning is the most interested in, and we want to make sure that your plan developments address these kinds of fundamentals.
But again, that, and I'll go back to Linda's hypothesis that we're a city of different zones. So it very well could be a plan development that's going in near the downtown area will have a very different set of concerns than a plan development that's going in out east of 95.
Right. And I disagree with that, but I know that like, there seems to be- I'm not trying to be vague about it, but TIA's keep coming up a lot at not necessarily the appropriate time. And so there are a lot of times, plan development comes to planning and zoning, and people are saying, well, what about the TIA? Or what about the- And so we had talked about, we need to have, and because regardless of where you are in town, it's going to be-
May I address TIA's? Internally, we have a model, and we are, that's one of the things that you'll see before Christmas, is the way that the TIA, if I understand the ordinance correctly, we're requiring developers to do one citywide. And one developer may do it with one set of circumstances, and the next developer comes in with a whole different set of circumstances, and the information's not particularly useful. So what staff is suggesting is that we use our model, so that the information is captured, and it's helpful from one to the next, so we're in control of where it is. And so we're trying to figure out a way that the city creates a traffic impact analysis that the developers then help feed the information in, so that we're left with something that's usable as we develop our city, instead of having 14 TIA's that don't marry up anyway.
Well, Lisa and I are laughing, because part of why they have that software is because planning and zoning asked council to fund it. Good job, ladies! That's what I say to them. But, and before, because of the TIA, you know, the legal limits of the TIA, exactly to your point, often citizens wanted to know what was the impact beyond the area of impact that's required for the TIA. But more specifically, we need to be clear about what they need to provide and when they need to provide it, and that needs to be a part of our training, because it is unfair to ask, and if we're using our own software, that's great. But we've been in a position of telling a developer, we're not approving your zoning until you bring us back a TIA. Well, if they don't even know what zoning they're getting, it's very difficult to do trip generation.
And having had that same challenge in another city that didn't have Bastrop's name on it, is you get in a situation where, are we really dealing with zoning? Or are we dealing with economic development? So that's part of the challenge that we need to have is, as we go through these, we're going to, I hope, instead of getting in the weeds, we're going to back up and get at a policy level, so that we have some direction. Because y'all think it's frustrating? You ought to be staff, sitting down, trying to negotiate and bring quality community development and economic development. We don't even know what the rules of engagement are. So part of what we want to do is to bring these things forward so that y'all can meet, just like you are tonight, and debate those things, because planning and zoning will only give you policy direction if they know what policy you're looking for. And so the joy of having a commitment, and I'm so thrilled council understands the power of these, is to do that very thing, so that when staff is sitting with that developer, it's really good when we go, oh, you're not ever going to get that. I can tell you right now, P and Z and council, they're just adamant they ain't going to do that. And know that from which we speak. But they are willing to do this, this, and this. To date, I don't know that staff could provide that direction on any of that.
And I would piggyback on that. And instead of referring to it as a template for P and Z's use, I think it's a more productive conversation to have standards that staff knows. These are things that planning and zoning will be looking at when you bring it forward. So if we tell them transportation and mobility is a high priority, staff knows, as they're working with the developer, that that's going to be something that they're going to be able to tell the developer, this is something that, you know, on a priorities list, they're not going to care about masonry standards as much as they're going to care about being able to get down the street. So I, and I think that goes to probably a later agenda item, but I think communication is going to be critical, not only between council and the commission, but between both bodies and staff. And it has to be two-way communication. I mean, commission can make grand pronouncements at our monthly meetings, but staff also needs to kind of keep us informed about, hey, you should know, this is coming toward you, and we just wanted to kind of keep you updated. The monthly report is great, but it's kind of skeletal. So we'll know, oh, look, somebody made a request for information on this. But the more information we know, so it doesn't hit us like a freight train at a November meeting. So we're saying, wait, 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 you know, did we know about this? And did we discuss this? And so I think communication amongst the bodies and between the bodies and the staff is absolutely critical.
I couldn't believe you hadn't already spoken. Mary, first.
Well, my concern that I throw to the Planning and Zoning Commission is to be open-minded with these new developments, because we have, we have these new developments coming at us, and they put together a plat, and it groups this kind of homes over here, and this section of homes over here, and another section over there. And they get moving along. We approve the first section, and they say, you know, the market is kind of going this way. We want to do something else in the next session. I had a bit of an issue over here at Pecan Park that when they came with the patio homes, and we got a recommendation from P and Z that P and Z wasn't for these patio homes. And I'm thinking, this section is totally by itself. It's not infringing on any other, on another section of that subdivision that it would be detrimental that you have a million-dollar house here and an apartment building right next door to it. I'm talking about major sections of a subdivision. And comments that I saw, well, the housing is too expensive. We don't like the looks of the type of housing. I'm thinking, it's really not for us to determine what we like. It's, if it's a new subdivision, if it's a new section, if it's a market that this developer feels like they can sell this, and it's housing that we need, why wouldn't we approve that?
And I would simply caution you not to simply assume planning and zoning goes into it with a closed mind. I think that's very unfair to the commission. And I think it's been great to have a council liaison who can actually sit there and listen to the entirety of the conversation. This may well go back to communication between staff, commission, council, and a big flowing circle. Because I don't think, I don't think the representations that came out of that meeting were reflective of the conversation that was held in that meeting.
Well, and that's quite possible.
And I would caution, you know, planning and zoning has actively tried to work with developers in trying to provide them a framework that we think will work within the context of the city, and not tell them, no. I don't think that's ever been a circumstance I've ever seen with any developer that's come before us. So I think it would be unfortunate for you to approach it with the perception that we're closed-minded. I don't think that's ever been the case, and I think it's unfortunate to characterize it as that. So I think it's going to be critical that we have these conversations, simply so we can overcome those perceptions that I do see.
And if anything like that comes up in the future, I would hope that at least the Chair of Planning and Zoning would know before a council meeting that there is a problem that they would like to discuss. Because at that council meeting, Lisa was blindsided, I was blindsided, council, the commission didn't know what was happening. Before we get too far off, let me tie this back and bring it back. I think the key is, and we need to go back, and maybe Joe needs to talk about this. We have to be very careful about the conversation that's had, because whether that was the intent of planning and zoning, that was the perception that was left. And that was the context that we have to then deal with. And so I think, going back to what Joe said, we shouldn't talk about whether or not we would live there, whether or not those are houses we want, because that then begins to talk about a segment of the population that isn't welcome, that leaves the impression under the Housing Act that that isn't the case. Whether or not that happened or not, I don't know, but that was the perception.
But I think it's important to realize, this was already zoned for patio homes. This was simply an amendment to move a setback. And so, I mean, it wasn't that we had foreclosed the possibility of patio homes. Those were always permitted. It was simply, do we want to go from a 15-foot to a 10-foot? And was that really a necessary change? Patio homes were already permitted. So, I mean, I think that's a perception that people are, or a fact that people are forgetting in the terms of Pecan Park. I'm not really here to relitigate the Pecan Park issue. I think that's in the past. I think it's an unfortunate event that was in the past, but I'm willing to start over, move forward, and improve communication.
And that's fine. And I, you know, I think, but not only was there a perception, it was more than a perception. There was a written comment that said so-and-so on the Planning and Zoning Commission said they didn't like it because the houses were priced too high.
I never heard that comment.
No, I don't think they said they didn't like it because they were priced too high.
They were voting against it because it wasn't priced-
And I don't think that, and admittedly, it's been a few months back. I'm certainly not going to try to rely on my memory, but I don't, I don't remember that being the context of the comment, which is why I think it's going to be critical for increased communication between council, commission, and staff. Because if that was what was conveyed, I certainly don't think anybody who was on the commission at that time recalled that comment being made, or any comment being made in a way that could be perceived that way, unless there was an active intention to perceive it that way. But again, I don't really intend to relitigate Pecan Park.
And that's fine. I'm just saying-
And it isn't on the agenda, so let's not.
Going forward.
I'm simply saying, it's unfortunate to characterize planning and zoning as closed-minded when anything but is that, is-
And that's fine. I'm just saying, going forward, be very cautious with the conclusions that you draw and how they are put forth to the council, because that's the information that we get.
And I would caution you to do the same.
And certainly, I mean, we will, we will try. I mean, it's difficult when you get a 300 or 400-page packet.
I don't mean to interject, but we really need to not have this discussion when it's not on the agenda. Are there some other topics that we need to talk about for future agendas?
I would ask any, planning and zoning, is there things that you need from council that you're not getting?
I think functionally, it's the communication. And I think maybe at the next P and Z commission meeting, we'll sit down and workshop. And maybe, I know I had members who really wanted to be here tonight. Unfortunately, the date was set without any kind of consultation with the commission, and one had a long planned vacation, one had theater tickets.
And I want to take full responsibility for that. I don't know that we're ever going to be able to coordinate nine schedules. And P and Z is appointed by council. So we're going to always work with their schedule. I believe we gave 30-plus days. So we're just going to strive for a quorum in that instance.
But if we had at least been given a, hey, we're thinking of August 10th, does this work for everyone? At least they would have been able to say, well, it doesn't work for me, here's why. I mean, I know, I know joint meetings and special meetings don't count toward our attendance requirement, but I do know at least two of the members expressed concern that they would, you know, be perceived as being scofflaws on their duties because they couldn't be here tonight, so.
Sure. It's being televised.
You glutton for punishment, you.
One of the things, and one of the items is, is discuss a commitment for future workshops and possible agenda items. And at this point in time, with that in mind, and knowing that that has been a concern. There are five Tuesdays in January. How about we put January 30th for the next meeting, and then everybody knows with six months' notice that we're going to have a meeting. January 30th, six months out.
Councilmember Jones believes that her calendar's already filled up on that day.
I'm fine with it.
And so we will send out a scheduler, and P and Z will put that on your future announcements. And as y'all have agenda items and work through some of these items, we'll communicate with P and Z and with council. And let me say this, if there are some things that come up, and it's possible as we go through our list of processes that we need to fix, if we as staff determine that, you know what, we're going to create- we're going to create more problems than we solve by taking it to P&amp;Z and then having a council meeting, we may pose a meeting between now and then in the spirit of the comprehensive plan and the work plan. But we can leave this evening with January 30th at 6:30 on the agenda.
And I might just add that at our last meeting, we spoke with Wesley and on everything with the staff report, it will reflect what chapter and how it, in the comprehensive plan and how it relates to that. So that'll be on all of our agenda.
And that will be very helpful, Ms. Moore, because one of the requests that council member or Mayor Protim Schiff made at the last meeting is, we've been putting the P&amp;Z packet in its entirety behind the council report and it's really cumbersome. So we're going to be modifying the council report to put a section on it for P&amp;Z recommendations so that your information is contained, very easy for them to go and to review. So I think all of those will be enhancements to communication. Mayor, I think that takes care of the things I need.
Okay, with that, I'm adjourning city council.
And I am adjourning planning and zoning and I don't feel the need to whack anybody with the mouth.
You have to whack it. It's my husband, ma'am. Thank you guys so much for your time.